I'd like to call that planning commission meeting to order. All members are present, we have established quorum. I do need to administer an oath to anyone that plans on speaking at today's public meeting. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth to this commission? Yes, or I do, sufficient? Thank you. We'll also take nods, it just doesn't show up on camera. Disposition of the last meeting's minutes, they are attached to the back of your agenda, if you've had a chance to review them.
I would move that we accept the minutes.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Any other corrections, discussion? Okay, all those in favor of accepting last meeting's minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, no opposition. All right, we do have no cases on the agenda. There was, I think, discussion at the last meeting of possibly having Mill Street on there as a communication or as a case, is that Mill Street Apartments? Is that not the case then?
Um, I was gonna speak about that later, but that's okay. Mr. Valentor was not present today, so they asked that they go on the agenda in the middle of May. They did not want to be present or try to do the presentation at the May 2nd agenda with the evening meeting, so they said here, no hurry. They actually, little miscommunication, were out in the hallway when we came in here to give their presentation, the owners were, but I told them and they said middle of May's fine.
Okay.
And they're gonna come into my office this week and we'll go over some of the comments that was given to me by Engineering Public Works, which they are not aware of yet.
Okay.
And we haven't received those either.
Yeah, we haven't received the comments, we've received drawings.
No, you have not, because again, it wasn't on the agenda today, so.
And this is 152, Mill Street?
Um, 152 and 154.
Okay, so I know where they are. And that's a Title 41?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay.
I think the confusion came because we had to sign up thinking they were going today, but we took it down three or four days ago.
Okay. All right, all right, there's no other cases, am I correct then? Communications, we were gonna be discussing business zones in great detail, another edit of those. I do understand that some citizens are here to speak about our upcoming public hearing or, let's say, meeting on the May, was it the 2nd?
May 2nd, 7:15.
At the community center, 7:15, thank you. If we could go ahead and move that up and discuss if people would like to speak now and then we could hold the rest of our discussion afterwards, is everyone okay with that?
So you're talking about moving the agenda for?
Yeah, moving item 6 up, the opportunity for citizens to speak about items not covered on the agenda up now, if that's?
I have no problem with that.
Any objections?
I'll second that, if that was a motion.
I'll make an emotion, yes, I'll lay some favor.
Aye.
No opposition, that'd be great. All right, so if anyone does like to speak, we'd ask at, I believe the table is mic'd, is that correct? All right, so either sit up at this seat here or at the podium, you have three minutes to make any statement that you would like to make. Thank you.
Thank God.
Just state your name and what street you live on.
My name is Mitch Endick, and I'm speaking in half of the business, and so 606 East State Street.
Okay.
And I have a letter, I'm not good at public speaking, so I have a letter that I've written, and the gist of the letter is requesting or asking if we could separate the two issues of commercial zoning and residential zoning, because they're two very different issues and are kind of lumped into one, and especially in regards to having the fact finding meetings. I have a letter I've written that Paul said he'd read for me, or someone could read.
Um, sure.
Is that okay?
Yeah, I can read, that's fine.
Okay.
Is it a record?
May I ask what the fact finding meetings are? What are the fact finding?
The public hearing.
Okay, okay.
Close enough.
It's probably 5:00 in the morning, so hopefully it's.
All right. All right, the planning commission is considering rezoning a large portion of properties close to a major business artery, East State Street, at the written request of two people. I would like to strongly suggest that this consideration be broken into two separate stages, request that the residential properties affected should be heard separately from the business properties affected. Further, the fact finding would be more helpful, if especially in the cases of business. If the planning commission would break the public comment into two sessions. Session one could be anyone who wants to add input. Session two could be just for the property owners and their expert witnesses. I have what I consider good reasons for this, there is fault. Public meetings and fact gathering is great in what makes us America. Anyone with an opinion can talk, whether the zoning change would directly affect them or not, or if they are a property owner or not. People can even reminisce when East State Street was an airport. This is all great, but the expert testimony may get lost in all of the voices. In many cases, the current residential zone property owners have a far less to lose than the commercial property owners. The two issues are really economically separate. Expanding on reason two, I would like to see the commercial property owners have the opportunity to call upon expert witnesses such as real estate, banking, et cetera, in a calm atmosphere. The last public meeting that the planning commission held in regards to the zoning got loud and almost out of hand several times because of high emotions. The planning commission needs to recognize why the emotions are in high. People are not upset because East State Street is developing or business wants to locate there. Number four, I would like to ask the planning commission to put boots on the ground and set up times to actually visit the commercial properties and their owners before they make life-changing decisions that may drastically and negatively affect commercial property owners and potentially put some people out of business by violation of their property loans at the banks. In summary, I'd agree that if all of the R2 property owners are polled and agree to change to R1, that's fine, but to commingle the question of rezoning business property to residential when you consider the devastating effects this can have, this is just not right. Business property rezoning should be a separate issue, considered with expert testimony and with all business owners affected made aware what is happening and the consequences. Thank you for your consideration, Mitch Endick. That's a letter dated today, the 18th.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mitch.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to? Okay, all right, we'll now close that section of the agenda. All right, back to communications, or back to the past I should say, business zones. We're discussing making some modifications to how the business section of code is defined. Starts at 230404 and goes through 230407. Paul and Shar graciously put together the proposed changes, and on one of your handouts, it says Title 23 zoning code, permitted uses at the top on the header. The second item that was provided is the business zones, as they currently exist in code. Some of the changes that were requested at last meeting are provided in the minutes, but in summary, I can go through it. Go ahead.
Okay, I was looking at the new improved version, I believe, current. But I'm a little bit thrown off by the, well, in particular, I know you've added sections like example 230404B. All business services processing shall be conducted wholly within a completely enclosed building, nothing new, and shall occupy story above grade plane.
Right.
Okay, that's worked its way all the way down to B2D.
Right.
B2D, I'm aware that there's businesses downstairs as well as upstairs, so I'm not sure how that above grade plane works at that particular level. Does that make sense?
Well, what I'm trying to say is that you can have it on the basement, you can have it on the third floor, but there has to be a business on that story above grade plane. And that definition comes from the Ohio Building Code. And it was one of Nancy's concerns, she brought up about a fact of if a business is located in the basement, and we were just saying residential has to only be on the story above the business, then it could mean that the residents might be at that street level. What we're saying is the story above grade plane is pretty much the street level as defined by Ohio Building Code. I provided that definition on the last page there.
I see, yeah, above, yes. Okay, so really, it's not excluding, you can't have a basement business, is the interpretation. Okay, that's when I started looking at that, that's when I kind of started thinking, okay, it had to be our grade plane and no other.
No, this is saying it has to, it has to be on that story above grade plane at the very minimum, this is just a minimum requirement.
Okay, I understand.
Can we look a little bit at that for a second?
Yeah.
In a hilly area, what does that mean?
Well, that's?
Let's say B2D going up the hill.
Well, the Ohio Building Code also defines, and we got into that discussion before, the Ohio Building Code does define, it's basically taken of the averages across, and I think it does a pretty decent job, for example, so. The definition is?
Another page, isn't it?
Yeah, on the back, very back page of the?
I'm looking at that, yeah, that's what I was looking at.
So any story having its finished floor surface entirely above grade plane, or in which the finished surface of the floor next above is more than six feet above grade plane, or more than 12 feet above the finished ground level at any point. So it's kind of by, you know, a series of reductions to try to determine if it's one of those where it's, you know, half the property is exposed at one level and the other, you know, you have to go up a few feet to get to the next exposure level.
So I guess that I'm not too concerned about this in neighborhood businesses, and I'm not even sure that I necessarily think they have to be on the second story, but our current code does use the word story, and I guess you are, you alluded to something that I'm not familiar with, and that is some problem with use of story as a definition rather than a grade plane.
Well, the concern was whether basement, you know, what story the basement level is, I didn't bring all the definitions, we have basement defined in code, and then we have story defined in code.
But in the zoning code or in the larger code?
In the, I think they're in the title through 23 definitions, if I'm not mistaken.
And have there been problems with that?
Not in, I mean?
Not that you know of?
Not that I know of.
I mean, we're just having this battle now as opposed to later, or a discussion, or whatever it is. Because, you know, I know, I can remember at least one time, and I had a tape I used to play occasionally, of when one of the, well, citizens who has definite opinions came in and lambasted a previous co-director about the definition of story, but other than that, I haven't seen.
Yeah, I mean, I think the only place this gets into an issue is if you have two street levels on a site, whereas there's a street level, you know, you have two, you know, a street behind the lot and a street in front of the lot, and the street behind the lot is, you know, at a higher level than the, you know, the street in the front. So this would define that the grade plane would basically be picking a section, so it has to be, you know, the next floor above, any floor, has to be more than 12 feet above the finished ground level at any point.
So in terms of our slopes and things in town, would it be good to put a through lot as a separate entity and maybe have, because a through lot is what you're talking about, a street on either side. I can think of some places where I don't know that I really like what you've got here, and maybe send, I don't, I don't want to increase the zoning boards, but, you know, I just think that with a real steep slope and that you could end up with things that you don't really want in some places.
I don't think it has to be a through lot, though. If it's any lots, you're trying to establish the point of grade, correct?
Right.
But he used the definition of a through lot, where he was fronted on two streets.
Yeah.
And we don't have that definition in our code, I don't think.
But I thought we had something in the definition of what the address was, depending on which street was bigger.
We do on that, through lots, yes.
So, you know, by default, you'd have one street that is the address, and it may be a through lot, but you're not having an address on the other side. Somebody has a through lot on First Street in Hanlon, it's First Street, not Hanlon that has the address at that point. I think, that's how it works, I mean.
Or you could take lots on Columbia, quite a few of them, and the slope is considerable in some cases.
Some of those will go all the way down to Columbus Road, and in theory, should be the bigger of the two roads.
Well, see, that's, and neither of those are business zones, but I was thinking about them. I'm trying to make sure that there's not some, I mean, council will, from my experience, be a little bit gimlet-eyed, maybe not so much anymore with any new definition, that's why. If you could demonstrate that there is a real problem we're solving with changing it, I'd like to know about it.
Well, I mean, the other option was to go with defining it as, you know, and shall occupy story above basement, but then you could get into a building that doesn't have a basement.
Basement or ground level, I mean, that's not too tough.
Except I have to go back to what you were indicating at the beginning. When I read that with the shall in there, I don't, that essentially eliminates those basements.
Oh, she's a zoning administrator.
Yeah, wow.
So, well, I thought when shall's used in this instance, it's saying it has to be occupied story above grade plane.
Where does it allow for the basement businesses to have?
Well, it's like when we say a parking, for parking requirements, for example, we say, you know, you have to have 30 spots, it doesn't say that means you can't have 32.
Well, that's another problem I have.
A lot of people have that problem.
Well?
One way or another.
Well, you know, I mean, you could, we've never used the argument with residences before that, you know, the residence has to be above the ground level, we don't say, well, that just means you have to be above the ground level and that's it, you can't be any, or we just say, has to be on story above, doesn't even say ground level.
So, but if I go back, Nicholas, we have not necessarily, with the possible exception of the most recent and controversial thing, I don't know of a time when the basement and first floor, I mean, it was really straightforward in, as the code was enforced, and it's always possible with a different administration and new code enforcement, that officer, if that would happen when Mr. Paskey retires, that you would have a, you know, you could have a different lead put on it, but, once again, I do not know why we're doing it this way when there isn't, we're not remedying any known problem, and we may be privileging somebody in a way they weren't privileged before.
All right, so say for example in B1, if we were to remove shall occupy story above grade plane, and it just sort of ended at has to be in completely a closed building. And then you get down to residential, and it says dwelling units only when located on story above other permitted principal uses within district to which this subsection applies. That would mean if someone locates a business in a basement, the street level would now be, could be a residential.
But right now?
In B1, it is allowed right now.
It is allowed, yeah, I mean, so there's no, I mean, this is a non-problem in B1 that I can, so number one is principal permitted use.
So you're suggesting strike it out in B1 and leave it in B2 and 3, or are you suggesting?
No, I'm, I'm just, I'm gonna fight the same battle in 2, too, also.
Okay, 2 as well?
As well, yes. I mean, it's, it's for a long time when we change the code like this, because people start to think that they have, I mean, you know, they build, they make loans and they do other things, as I heard a few minutes ago from Mr. Endick, so if you borrow money on the basis of what might be. So it's not to be entered into lightly, is my fundamental opinion.
My question, of course, was whether you exclude basement businesses.
Right.
And most places, we don't see it in the B1s, but, or even in the B2s, but the B2D, we can probably count about a half dozen right now.
And B3s, right?
Yeah.
Right.
And B3s as well, so.
Yeah, and from a fire safety point of view, you wonder about that.
I'm aware, I think housing regulations actually prohibit some of the basement apartments provided, because they have to have a second egress, so there has to be some kind of above grade event or location, I think.
Fire suppression allows for residential in a basement in a commercial building.
Didn't you have to require a second exit and have a?
Well, that would be the one as well, yes, but windows are not a requirement if it's fire suppressed.
Really?
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, you mean if it's sprinkled?
Mm-hmm.
Which wouldn't be most of these.
Yeah, so?
But that's residential, we're talking about, in that business again. I was just trying to think where, again, my question was, you know, was it saying this only and no other, but I understand what we're trying to do here, we're trying to make sure we can get, you know, get that, you know, regardless of whether it's called a basement, which we've seen, or a ground floor, and, or first floor, we've seen those used almost interchangeably at times.
Right, yeah, all that I'm trying to get at is, is to say residence can't be on the street level, but I'm trying to define that street level in something that has already been tested by using the Ohio Building Code. But if we?
But we don't have residences.
But right now, B1 residences are allowed, they're allowed on street level, they're allowed to be anything that is an adjacent, if it's next to an R1 or R2 or R3, can be just like what's in that adjacent zone. So this would be a significant change by saying, no, if it's in a business zone, residential cannot be on street level, or at the basement level even.
The idea would be to go in the direction of some of the newer ideas where you have local businesses serving the local market. I mean, it wasn't a decade ago or a decade and a half ago that people were saying, let's get rid of all the B1 zones, but for people on council, now 100, they also said the same thing.
And the businesses, the businesses weren't happy about it.
Yeah, I know. And get rid of the alleys, too, that was the other thing, and both of those are newer ideas that have come back, and they say that's really important to quality of life, both cases. So, I'm not convinced, Nicholas.
I'm trying, I'm trying to figure out how alleys are part of quality of life, except for the?
You can pull your car off the road and park it in your backyard.
Oh, I see, okay, okay. Oh, you mean residential alleys?
Yeah.
I was thinking of the Court Street alleys and all the trucks, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay.
All right, so we, so should we consider keeping residences as it was previously? And again, that's on that current zone.
So it says?
A4.
Any permitted as regulated in the residential district, is that what it says in here, too?
Yeah.
Dwelling, okay, adjoining the B1 zone, and if they're adjoining two or more different categories, so it's that kind of transition problem.
So backwards, yeah, you have to go to another zone to determine what you can do.
Why would we keep that in there, just asking? Why would we continue to allow the regulations of the least restrictive residence zone shall prevail?
So you want to?
We're going to see that soon, that's why I'm saying that.
Did you say keep it in or strike it?
Yes, I don't know why that's in there, I don't know if you can speak to?
The least residential?
Yeah, why they have the regulations of the least restrictive residence.
As it's written right now, if it's a B1 zone and it abuts a residential zone, the least restrictive, why they choose the least restrictive, I don't know, but it was, you know, if it abuts an R1 and R2 and R3, then if it's a residential structure in a B1 and it abuts a B1 zone, it abuts an R3 zone, a residential building could be built that meets the R3 standards, bulk controls.
That may go back to what Nancy was just saying about a decade ago, the attempts to strike the B1s from our zoning code, and so they added that in there to encourage the disappearance of B1s.
In a moment of brilliance.
Yeah.
So if you want to protect the B1s, that's?
Well, we would like to, I'd like to encourage them, I don't know about protect.
All right, so 1 in 6 are kind of tied together of that principal permitted uses and development limitations, we'll take a further look at that.
Could, and in that case, you use story versus grade, I'm just being?
Well, the example, the case coming up, or potentially coming up, does reference the above grade plane situation because the backside of the building is a grade lower, so commercial can go in on that lower level, and then the front side, we're saying, could be residential from there and above, or, that's why I think, I don't, I don't believe Mr. Bittner's aware of the case, but there's some clarification that we may need here. I don't know what it is.
And the residential is, the business is fronting a street, right?
Correct.
So in that instance, the floor?
It is not at this time, but it could be.
So in that instance, the floor above the lowest level is, the entire floor above it is six feet above grade plane?
Yes, now wait a minute, the? The first floor, as we would call it, is at grade on the front side of the building. The basement, if you want to call it that, is at grade on the backside of the building, which also faces a street.
Different street.
Different street.
Similar to if you had a walkout, walkout basement in a residential home because of the slope.
And we do have a few instances like that around town that does not, or is not on a street to the rear of it, that's why the through lot thing, I don't know if we should discuss it that way or not. And there are a few on Court Street, so if a business was at the lower level from the backside, then therefore residential could be at grade on the front side, which I do not believe we want to see happen.
When you say front side, you're implying that the address?
Court Street side, correct.
Court Street side, so I think, I'd have to go back to the start of Title 23, but I think there is a definition of what constitutes the front versus the back, so to say, we're gonna put in the back, business in the back and residential in the front, I don't think we'd?
It is, I can't remember which building it is, it's confused, because we've got, I think, still Wendy's building, isn't it?
Okay.
Or the Wendy's building, or the, there's a door that comes in off of Court Street, and as you walk down the hallway to the rear of the building?
You're talking about the Burger King over here.
Yeah, to the rear of the building, there is an apartment, but it is a story above the grade behind it, but the entrance to it is at street level, as most of them are, because they have stairs, but this one is not, it's a straight walkthrough, so.
And they have a basement.
And it has, yeah, and it has a basement with residential validity, isn't it?
I know.
Or is it commercial?
It was commercial.
So.
Yeah, I mean, if that, that lower level is 12 feet?
Nicholas, thanks for doing all this work, I know, we've opened up this chat.
I think I'd have to see a cross section of that to see how it would apply.
And I do think, if we go back and talk a little bit about it, informally, you would say, when you have a problem in a specific building, the zoning board came through and offered a solution to a sticky problem that generally wouldn't have been allowed in the code, I think, whether you like it or not, or, you know, whatever you think of it. I realize, you know, the big blue thing is going, it's a good thing. But, you know, can we go back to 4 and strike in if there isn't adjoining two or more different categories and just adjoining, adjoining the B1 zone, wouldn't that solve the problem? Back on 4? I hadn't left that.
Oh, strike from Aunt, just end at B1 zone?
You want to see a cross section?
What are we talking about? B1?
This is in the current code.
Okay, current.
I was asking why we would retain that.
That's why I got lost, I thought.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I get confused, too. One should be in red now, after I explicitly asked not to have red.
This is probably over 12 feet, probably not. See, if it's not, then this would, then it'd have to, you'd have to go to the next floor.
Where does 12 feet come from?
So that would still be?
That's his definition.
But even so?
Yeah.
It's complex, simplicity is often good.
So that still would be, that street level with, at the existing fast food restaurants, that would still be considered a story above grade plane?
And it may be, I don't know, to be honest, what the height is back there, but, just explaining.
All right, well, that's?
It's introducing a whole different concept than what we're familiar with.
Yeah.
This time, we've gone from story to grade plane and, so.
I was thinking about Fern Street, Fern Alley, also, yeah, Fern Alley both sides. There's some others, but that one would be a good one. Of course, it's probably built out.
No, it's got, it's got room for growth, I mean, there's some single-family houses there still.
There's a proposal for both of those to be demolished and a new building built behind the?
Bookstore, isn't it?
No, the, help me out the one on Carpenter, the, the Martin City.
Carpenter Inn and Hallioker.
Those two, 18, 20, Fern.
So you have a proposal already?
It's just been, the owners come in and spoke with me about it, and it would be a situation where, same thing, and then the parking, we're back to that, for the parking's coming in off the rear on one side, and entrance to the apartments on the alley behind Carpenter Hall from the other side.
But the current code would allow that proposal, you think?
It's B3 in there.
Well, that's parking on the first floor in a B3, so, we're back to that.
Oh dear. What a sticky thing.
All right, let's move forward, I think we're gonna have to discuss? All right, um, let's move forward, I think we're going to have to discuss that in greater detail, the, how we, the story above grade plane. Permitted uses for the B1, the, or, I'm sorry, permitted accessory uses for B1 have been added, there were none listed before.
Yeah.
It was just a conditionally permitted uses, so if you put a garage or anything on, any accessory used to something current in the B1 would have to go through the BZA.
These are permitted accessory, not conditional.
So I'm adding permit, yeah. I would think B1, we shouldn't treat it any differently than we do the other zones, and typical accessory uses, and structures not otherwise prohibited, customarily accessory and incidental to any of the foregone permitted B1 uses should be automatically permitted. The other-
As opposed to being currently, it's conditionally permitted.
Yeah, it has to go through BZA.
Can you give me an example?
Uh, I think, any garage would have to go through the BZA in B1.
Parking garage, I mean.
Under permitted accessory uses, you are not assuming that those all go to the BZA, or you are?
No, these are not.
Not, okay.
But in the current code, it's a conditionally permitted use.
Correct.
So it goes to the co-
Would have to go to the BZA, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, so now you're saying it would be a permitted, no BZA garage?
No BZAs necessary if you're doing a, what is, an accessory use in structure that's customarily accessory and is incidental.
Looking at the current code, that's section 230404B1, and you've moved it, so you've added another section here.
Yeah.
And it's, and you've added also number 2 is parking, you've added that to it, it looks like, is that right?
Yeah.
And then, conditionally permitted uses are the, what was previously part of 2, running to the old.
Exactly.
Okay. So-
I have to ask again, why? Why have we removed that layer of review?
Because it's the only zone that, for some reason, had it as a conditional, if you go down to B2D, accessory uses in the structures that are incidental and accessory are permitted accessory use. Same with B2, as well as B3.
Is that possible because we want more oversight of what goes into a B1, or is that because it's adjacent to an R1?
It could be what, you know, what Nancy and Mr. Logue were getting at, that, you know, in an effort to do away with B1s, to make it the most difficult to develop in the business. But I mean, it would mean, same thing with the residential, even if you could do the, what a residential of the least restricted zone, if you were going to do anything other than your house, you're going to have to go to the BZA.
Do you think it's been enforced that way?
I don't know when we have to use it. I mean, basically, B1s are not that-
Jim, by the flower shop, there was a garage permitted and built, I don't think it went to the zoning board.
Barber shop?
Oh, yeah, flower shop.
Did I say barber shop?
No, you said flower shop.
It's a distinct-
I never, I never, I'm never sure what I said.
No, I thought you said, I'm trying to think, Flower Shop ended up as a PUD.
No, no, right next door to it, there's the old house, Jim's old house, they just put a garage back there, remember when we talked about the flow of traffic?
Yeah, I did. John, your recollection, you remember having to enforce any-
The only, only B1 I can think of since I've been here would be the Dirty Deeds Building, or Dirty Duds, off the top of my head, and I don't, I've gone like, certain Carpenter.
And they went to the BZA for their parking?
There was a Title 41, and no, they didn't have to go to BZA for parking because the business remained on the first floor.
Flower Shop is B1. Unless it's-
The Flower Shop is B1, yes.
So I'm trying to think what accessory structures, when this would actually occur.
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't-
Storage set?
I was going on the hunch-
Storage set?
Oh, no, you're fine. I was going on the hunch that it was just incorrectly listed under conditional permitted use, and not that it was an intentional, especially if no one's been enforcing, I don't see the point in it remaining as a conditionally permitted use.
You think about some of the successful businesses that we have, you know, somebody with that, the B3 area over by Schaefer and Union, and that vicinity, and you wouldn't want necessarily to tighten it up to the point where it couldn't continue, I mean, it seems to work, is what I would judge.
Well, he's, he's loosening it up, so.
Yeah.
Well, I thought, not including those which first permitted or are not permitted in the B3 zone, is that what you're saying?
Well, no, what I'm saying is, I'm just moving it, rather than it remaining under a conditional permit, that you, it's just permitted.
Mm-hmm. But, you know, I guess I would like to actually have you go back to the, yeah, never mind.
Do you have a copy of the current code?
Yeah, I know, it's B2, and then he said B3, which makes more sense.
I thought we were on, oh.
Well, she's looking at-
At conditionally current uses.
Code B2.
Yeah, and I guess, I thought you guys were going to be flailing around on parking forever, and I was, had gone off in another direction, I'm sorry.
I was still flailing around on parking.
Well, I, I'm not sure that I really want to see parking in those limited areas that we have, which are mostly foot.
That's what I just was trying to say.
Another place to park some cars.
So then if there's not the additional review, then it's permitted, is what Nicholas is proposing?
Yeah, as long as it's as, as it's required by the principal permitted use, and subject to additional provisions to 2308 and Off Street Parking Requirements Table B. So it's permitted, as long as they do it according to the code. If it's, I mean, we can, you could make all parking conditional and have it reviewed by the BZA, I guess.
No.
I don't think we want that.
We've got the tree commission doing that, too.
Right.
We've got some oversight.
So this would limit parking only if it's as required for the, by the principal permitted use, in the B warrant?
Still trying to figure out when it comes into play, but I'm trying to think of all the B1s, or the potential of-
All right, so that's something to consider, whether accessory uses and parking should be conditional permitted.
And I understand, the other sections have permitted accessory uses, but that one doesn't.
Yeah, that one does not, and then again, I think it may have been trying to make it more difficult within the B1, as a, as a means to an end, to, you know.
You'd have to look and see when it was adopted and put in place. If that's, was the intent.
Could you just leave it with it could have been?
Could have been, okay. Don't want to do any sleuthing, is that what you're telling me?
I'm sleuthed.
All right, um, move on to B2 Business District. In here, again, we set forth the shall occupy story above grade plane, we'll be discussing that in further detail.
Ad nauseam.
Exactly. Again, here, all businesses shall be contacted wholly within enclosed building, again, except for the sale of automobile, fuels, lubricants, fluids, and service stations. Retail service establishment, this now allows, permits automotive service and gasoline stations, but requires that they could be perceived from an R-zone, this is, again, it's similar to how it is in code now. Again, we have our dwelling only has to be, has to be on the story above permitted principal uses within district which the subsection applies.
So, just a clarification, so we're talking primarily with B2 as Richland Avenue primarily, right?
I think that's the, yeah, the Margers, B2.
Okay.
Yeah, B2, it's just outside of-
Mm-hmm. It's only on the south side, yeah.
You have moved-
You shifted around the priorities a little bit.
Yeah.
Just because that was kind of brought up by Nancy, I think.
Right, make prioritizing the business over a residential use. You know, a convenience business is something basically open after hours, like a convenience store, or a gas station, you know, something will permit in the B2, but again, it's a lower priority.
And that's in the definition of the last page.
But that's removed also from having to go to the BZA, a retail business or service establishment, so the business and professional convenience business is going to be a-
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I don't think that was-
That would be compatible, right?
Mm-hmm, I think so.
I think so.
Yeah, that makes sense.
The permitted accessory uses, that didn't really change, other than adding the, again, the parking as a permitted accessory use, and not a, where before, it wasn't even mentioned.
Can I jump back for a second for the retail and service establishment definition?
Yeah.
That's on your last page there.
Yeah.
Establishments for 75% of the annual dollar volume of sales of goods or services, or of both, is not for resale, so that makes it retail. This recognizes retail sales or services of a particular industry. In addition, more than 50% of the establishment's dollar volume sales of goods or services must be within the state of which the establishment is located. What does that mean? Biennial, Ohio, is that state, or state or something else?
With, that is, let me see.
I'm, I'm just asking, I don't-
Yeah, within the, basically, with, their sales within that state aren't, like, basically online sales to outside.
Oh, online, okay.
Yeah, I can add that.
Where did you get that definition?
Uh, it was from Washington State, was the best of the ones that I found.
I shop there all the time.
Ohio did not have a, a definition that I could readily find for retail and service establishment. Now, we had it in code, but we never defined it. We use that, what's permitted is a retail and service establishment, but we've never had a definition for it before. And then it goes on to list some of the examples, what qualifies as retail and service establishment.
And in B2, the implication is that they could go way beyond the normal nine to five operations, could even be 24 hours, right?
In the B2, yeah, if it's, and then it would be considered a convenience business.
I mean, so that would make a difference from a B1?
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Okay. And there are probably some other ones, but that one seems like it's the most obvious.
Yeah, that besides allowing the automobile, automotive, the addition of convenience businesses, the other change, as well as the condition of permitting a drive-through, whereas in B1, it's prohibited.
Okay, without necessarily, using an, uh, pointing, using example, but what, we have relatively small lots with problems with ingress and egress, and you could imagine that a gasoline service station could be a serious traffic, I'm sure you are even familiar with the problems associated with such a development on the B2, as we have it located. Would you want, and I, the number of gasoline stations has definitely reduced in the last decade or so, so that's one thing, but would you want to have a frontage requirement, a conditional permit on that?
Make that a condition on the B2.
I mean, make it, make the distance, make some limited distance, or, I don't know, I just wonder-
Oh, for me, too, yeah.
Because I was thinking, because it is a street that is going to be targeted for redevelopment soon, I mean, they were talking, and the planners said, well, why don't you just take out one side, you know, it's like, that, I would-
Right, well, that 50-
All the ingress and egress on this side, you can only go in on this side, and you can only go out.
It would have worked with a roundabout, I'm telling you, it would have been a nice flow, but-
Yeah, well, I'm sure.
That 50 feet requirement is the big sticking point on that B2 area, so that, that would, most of the lots, you're not going to have a 50 feet from an R-zone on Richland Avenue, so you really couldn't only develop a gas station towards the, the very end at the, where the interchange is.
I think 50 is the end.
One of the other things that was brought up on this, though, is traffic control in general, I think it was in the minutes last week.
Yes, but until we have an access management ordinance, or overlay, or something-
Transportation access management-
Yeah.
Which would actually come into play for some of the setbacks we were talking about.
Would that be in the zoning code, or in the municipal?
We don't have it.
I mean, what's the vibes, where will it land in the code? Access management?
That's a good question.
Ideally, I think from Andy, it would be a standalone chapter.
We do have a section in traffic, I forget what title it is.
Except for that.
So then, but then that would add on like another overlay on top of the zoning code, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
In the business uses?
Yes.
What's that, though?
It's for transportation access management, the whole idea of limiting the access-
I can't remember the manual, Andy's always citing, but-
Pro, pet, pro-
Yeah, he's always citing a specific manual and traffic count, so on and so forth.
That'll solve the problem, that'll solve the problem, probably.
Well, we don't have it, though, I mean, so, at this point.
In your definition, back to this retail and service establishments-
Yeah, I notice-
You eliminate accounting firms, medical and dental clinics, we have those.
Well, those are considered office, business and professional, typically.
We have professional in R1s, right now. So, they'd be not, well, they'd be allowed there.
No, this, on, B3, B, I'm sorry, in B, in business zone, B2.
Yeah.
You go to B, number 3, office is permitted, and it's also permitted in B1.
Oh, professional. Okay, so, it is, but then when you have the, some examples establishments that maybe retail sales and service, automobile repair shops, bowling alleys, gasoline stations, appliance service and repair shops, department stores and restaurants, makes sense for, for some of that. Some examples of establishments that are not retail, accounting firms, medical and dental clinics, construction companies, radio and television stations. To my knowledge, there are accounting firms in the B2D right now, I can figure one or two.
On Richland, radio and television, you've got the cable access.
Somebody's building, I think, somewhere.
Well, they're, they're permitted, again, they're, yeah.
Okay, they fall into-
They just fall under a different category of the permitted uses.
Not retail, service, professional.
Right, that's all. I'm just trying to draw a, a clear distinction between what's a retail service establishment, and what's an office, and more.
Okay.
Now, we allow both in all business zones.
Okay, and how would-
And the only reason we had that distinction before, and I didn't see a need to rid that distinction.
Should that say some examples of establishments that are business and professional, instead of not retail?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, that might be, you know, and just do a separate definition of office, what we consider as office use.
And back to that first part of the retail and service, when you talk about 50% being in-state, I mean, does this mean we have to track sales for online businesses, and do online businesses even get tracked? I, I think I've had conversations with people in Court Street, saying, most of my business is online, and therefore, I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I don't know how to work retail, you'd have to, to track things, you know, and it's, you know, what happens if a business is predominantly, you know, providing services for the state, but then as they grow, they start providing services for outside.
That's my question, how do I, for 75% of sales and stuff like that, I mean, I can't look at their accounting records.
It's probably the same problem you have with some of the liquor stores, I mean, there are exemptions to our liquor code.
Right.
I think it's the DXs, D5Xs, that have to have certain square footage, and a percentage of food versus alcohol.
Right.
But who tracks that?
I guess, how do you, right now, when you enforce the retail and service establishment section of code, how do you enforce that?
All right, that's a, that's a shake of the head.
Is that a question?
Do nod or shake your head, the eighties were important, isn't it?
You know, and I think, you know, we're saying that it's, it's a guiding line, you know, I mean, it's sort of not-
Oh, no, we're not going to guide.
Yeah, well-
I don't like that.
Well.
R.
Maybe how we landed here in the first place.
Okay, I'll, I'll say, I don't think it's-
Okay, let's keep it in there.
It's one of those, we didn't, we, remember, we tried this approach at the beginning of the zoning, let's list each individual retail service establishment permitted, we're trying to give a little more, you know, interpretation in the code than that. We're trying to give a little more, you know, interpretation in the code than that. So I do think we need to find more balance in, you know, a way that is enforceable, and I think maybe being, you know, if we provide a range or I, you know... It's really just at the initial permitting process, we're not going...
All retail businesses, offices, professional organizations excluding rentals, internet cafes and strip clubs.
There you go. If I set that language, then we got it.
Write it down and we'll send it to you. Okay, and I see the 50%, you know, again, I can see where you have a business that the doors are never open, it's always online.
Right.
It's on, you know, B2 zone.
They're all over Parkersburg.
But why would you spend the money to be there if you...
You're talking about the internet?
Yeah.
No, just empty stores.
City perks?
Yeah, I don't understand why you would be there.
Instead of using the percentage of dollars, why don't you use floor space in terms of what they're going to need to display product of their services?
So maybe say...
Which is more measurable for somebody like code enforcement to come in and see rather than looking at books.
And that's part of the professional businesses in R-zones, I think, there's a percentage of floor space that's required to be residence versus business.
Home occupation.
For home occupation.
Yeah, home occupation.
About in the business itself.
Oh, yeah, but we've used that metric before, that's why I mentioned.
Stabilizer.
All right, is that something you could find, John?
The home occupation law, we do all the time now, it's 25% of the first floor and it has to have the same entrance as the primary residence, and we do get a number of applications for that, and it works, because we just ask them for a copy of the floor plan.
Good.
Just maybe run a line through the annual dollars, and basically what this is about is for John to be able to actually go in and practically enforce code rather than something that he doesn't have any access to.
Yeah, well, the section for in the R1 zone is 230401, section looks like section B4, professional offices and home occupation, provided not more than one-half the floor area of the dwelling is devoted to such an accessory use, and that not more than one person who is not a resident of the residence is employed at home, and no such use shall require exterior structural alterations involved construction features not customary in dwellings, and the entrance to such office or home occupation shall be within the dwelling.
So we're kind of going the other way in saying, you know, what RJ's suggesting is going establishments worth, let's say, 51% of the floor plate... Floor space is...
A retail...
Yes, recognized as retail sales or service in a particular industry, and then scratch the rest. So it's kind of what happens once you get above 51%.
So what can the other 49% be?
Storage, workspace.
Online. I don't know.
Storage, workspace.
Parking.
What? Apartments?
I'm throwing...
Parking.
Parking.
Had to bring it up, didn't you?
Got to ask.
If you ask that question, it's like one we have to... So we slog through two of them.
Yeah, in an hour.
In an hour. And we... I think we made substantial progress, but, you know, I'd like to kind of bring B2 to a close. I think we have a little bit more to work to do. But look at B2s in our existing code. A zoning district promoting community-scale retail and service establishment similar in nature to a B1 zone, the desired development is intended to be pedestrian-oriented and buildings with a storefront character are encouraged.
That's the new one.
That's the new one.
Is that the new?
Yeah.
And I think you captured it.
Okay, so I was going to say we need to move it over, so you can tell. It's time for me to quit. But pedestrian-oriented, I mean, what kind of dream world are we living in here? On Richland Avenue.
It's going to help Andy out with convincing the curb cuts.
Okay, so can we wrap this up, please? My head is... About two zones is all I can handle in one.
No, I think that's a good suggestion, I'll second that motion.
I mean, you made a mighty effort and we're working it through, and I do like your B2 definition, although it's pie in the sky.
I have homework to do on the trailer.
Yeah, I was going to ask you, I left it in here for now.
Trailers, I thought that was in the code already, though.
It is.
Trailers, it's in section six of...
But it's supposed to be removed from the code or moved to somewhere else.
Trailers, parking a trailer in any R-zone shall be prohibited except when one trailer may be stored in an accessory to the principal use, provided that no living quarters shall be maintained, and any business conducted in connection therein while such trailer is parked or stored.
That's not the same as a...
Trailer park. No, it just says none, no trailer in R-zone.
Okay, any other discussion about business zones?
So we're tabling the rest of that?
We'll table the rest of that discussion.
It'll be better for the discussion.
Be refreshed. All right, next up on the agenda is report from the city planner and director of development and code enforcement. Either of you like to provide a report today? You can say anything.
Yeah, I can start here, trying to balance covering the minutes for Charlene, I apologize, I'm sure they're not going to be perfect. I do just a few things. One, the arts parks and recreation master planning process is still moving forward. There will be a public forum next Wednesday, April 25th, at 5:30 PM. Dr. Anita James and her graduate level class at Ohio University will be facilitating that and getting group discussion going. Additionally, as part of that, we are finalizing a survey. We expect that that survey will be sent out to 650 community center members, 650 non-community center members. Dr. James recommended that, so that ideally, based on survey methodologies, we should get 125 or more from each group back, which will give us, if you're curious, a statistical power of .80 with .05 probability, which is generally assumed to be an accurate survey. We are also... I received more correspondence from FEMA on the updated flood maps. They will be doing a hydrologic and hydraulic study. They have asked property owners who may be impacted or that they would may need access so that they can do field observations and data collection and elevations. They have sent out letters to them asking for permission to access their land. They expect that that field data will be collected starting this month and by the end of May of next month. I believe, at least I will be, and possibly mayor while and several other local officials will be taking a tour on Monday of Carroll County, Ohio, which is a county in the east, eastern side of the state. Carroll County has a... Has the most hydraulic fracturing activity going on in the state of Ohio right now, and through regional planning and a few other organizations. It was recognized that people in Athens County should probably take a look at what actually happens, what are the other impacts of hydraulic fracturing if you were to see a boom come into Athens County. We're going to be talking with local officials, including the county auditor, county commissioner, the former mayor of Carrollton, Ohio, and a few others, and then taking some tours to see what the sites look like, and so that we can help to, you know, if this were to happen in Athens County, what kind of issues should we be dealing with at the local levels with respect to planning and impacts on schools and tax bases and hotel occupancy rates and things of that nature, so. And just one other announcement, I've been working through the city of Athens, our Bicycle and Pedestrian Subcommittee. There's been some citizens who are active with that, who typically put on every year what they call the Bike Rodeo, which is that happens on May 19th at the community center from 9:00 AM to 12:00. The Bike Rodeo is always, it's an event for children so that they can learn kind of, you know, proper things to do on a bicycle, how to, you know, look both ways and just the mechanics of wearing a helmet and all of those things. As part of that, through the Subcommittee, we discuss kind of a need for some of that same type of training and to give confidence to adults, so that they feel more comfortable riding bicycles in the streets and understand the rules of the road. So they're doing an event, which they're calling Athens Simply Cycling, which they hope to be an annual event. That'll take place at the community center parking lot on Wednesday... Or Saturday, the 19th of May, from 1:00 to 3:30 PM. As part of that event, there will be meeting and greeting with Athens cyclists and groups, including the Athens Bicycle Club, the OU Mountain Biking Club, the Hawk Hocking Adena Bike Way Committee and several others. You can learn how to fix a flat, see a display of different types of bicycles and why you might choose one type based on what your commuting patterns or your recreational activities might be. As well, there'll be in an hour and a half where you can learn cycling skills, so you know some of the basics on how to handle a bike, what the rules of the road are, the value of having a helmet and gloves and all of those things, so if anybody's interested, feel free to attend.
I believe that's the same day as the International Street there, just so...
That's good to know.
I think, if my memory is correct, that's the 19th as well. But that's usually, that's an all-day event, so you can go, you know, bicycle from one to the other.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Also, I'm aware there's that zero waste initiative has having a series of meetings throughout the two counties, Hocking and Athens.
Yes, there will be one in this... At the community center, I believe...
30, it's 30 first, maybe?
Thursday evening, I believe that's May 30th or the 31st, and that'll be, I want to say at 5:30 PM at the community center.
31st.
The 31st, okay.
Yeah, we'll hear more about that as time goes on.
All right, any questions for... John?
As I'm sure many of you are aware, last Tuesday evening, the Board of Zoning Appeals approved the variance for the Blue Gator Building. Two, the variances were per deeded parking greater than 250 feet for the residential units above, zero parking spaces for the first floor business to be established, and the site yard setbacks. They will still need, as the building is presented right now, to come to city council for a revocable license for a small balcony, not what they have now, obviously, unless they decide to remove that, and that is something they are discussing, to not even have to go through that step, so I don't know where they're at on that at this time. After that, if they do go that route, they will need Title 41, so it will be coming through here, and then they'll also need their, obviously, state building permits and then the city's zoning permit after that, so a number of steps will still go through, but they got to go through the BZA and receive their approvals.
John, was there any discussion about the, you know, realize this commission has actually talked about changing from B2D, B3 to B2D for that area. Was there any discussion about the zoning transition there or no? I know it's not there available.
I don't think it came up, maybe briefly. Mr. Garrick may have mentioned that it is recommended by the planning commission, but I can't, I'm not going to sit here and quote that, I can't remember. If they did, it was very short.
Okay, just wondering.
As we discussed, the 152 and 154 Mill Steve project will be here in May, as of now, two weeks or four weeks, two meetings from now, four weeks from now. And then last Friday, our code office did two in-service training sessions throughout the day. The first one was Glenn Crippen with HABCAP on the fair housing laws, very interesting, and we spent the morning going through that and learned quite a bit about some interesting stuff. Lot longer presentation than I believe council probably received. And then in the afternoon, Kathy Bobo and John Williams from the Athens Soil and Water District came in and spoke with us about the R-land development ordinance and soil erosion, and then we visited a couple of sites and they showed us some indications of where soil erosion may occur and what to look for and so on and so forth, so very insightful. And now we've got a few others we want to keep an eye on, so. And then I don't have it with me, but a week from Sunday, right, beautification day?
29th.
So 29th, yes. We don't have a meeting prior to that, and the spring cleanups the entire week before, so is that correct, starting?
Next week?
Next week.
Yeah. John, is it my understanding that at this time, I'm just reading what I read in the newspaper, that there is no business identified for the first floor there of what used to be the Blue Gator?
That is correct, but the owners have been in the office and have very much indicated they're working diligently to get one. So they had a hamburger place out of Columbus that was interested, but it sounds like they want to be a little bit closer to Union, so I don't know where that business stands, but I do know they are diligently working to find a business, so, as much as I know.
Right, so but once they... It doesn't matter what the business is and what its parking requirements is, doesn't have to have any?
They get, they receive, well, I, when we calculated the square footage of the building, I calculated it on the most extreme use, so the variance was for the most extreme use for the first floor, so, which was 18 parking spaces. So they did receive a variance for 18 parking spaces for the first floor, which would be a restaurant use, restaurant or bar type use.
Okay.
So, and then the second and proposed third floor will have 20 residences, which will be deed restricted onto a parking lot on Carpenter Street. That's next to, that's the house that we all know is a Staggerin', I cannot remember the address of it at this time.
What's the distance on that?
It was 300 and some feet, I can't tell you off the top of my head, but, or maybe even greater than that, but it was definitely greater than 250.
Is that the... Are you talking about the lot that's... The Cornwall lot?
No.
No, Grosvenor and...
No, this is owned by Joe Kraus, who is going to be one of the owners of the building. It's the... Help me out, I can never remember which one's first, Franklin or Grosvenor, which one's it?
Grosvenor.
It's at the corner of Grosvenor and Carpenter, then?
Right across from the...
There's a lot there.
I'm sorry?
There's a lot there.
There's a lot there, and then the same gentleman also owns the lot on Grosvenor across the street behind the 12 East Carpenter Building, that parking lot behind there. He owns both of those parking lots, and we checked out everything to make sure that they were not deed restricted or assigned to other structures elsewhere, and he does have the available parking in those lots, in one of those lots.
What zone is that parking lot in?
That is a B3.
Was something going to happen with the Staggerin'?
No, it's just a house.
It's that house on the...
And they, their parking is still required in that lot as well, so their parking is in that, so that house, I think, has...
I must not have the...
12 or 15 beds.
Grosvenor and Carpenter.
It's across the street from the old RTC, that red house that there's a parking lot dumpster that John Presley complains about all the time, and Staggerin' is the next building down going to us Franklin. They're rental there.
It's a brick, yeah, that has a huge parking lot, so can't remember what the number of beds are to that house, but the house and the deed at parking will fill that parking lot up.
Is that Tony Farian's house?
No, I believe he did use to own it, now it's owned by Joe Kraus.
Instal holder in period. Past tense, sorry.
All right, well, I mean, that's a good point, it is something to consider with these business-owned rewrites. You would not be able to get a parking lot deed restricted for somewhere else. Again, if that's a B, or what zone did you say that is in?
B3.
B3. You would not, parking would only be an accessory to the permitted principal use on that lot, so you would not be able to have a lot just dedicated to parking to some other use elsewhere, so that would...
Existing or permanent, or current?
In the, in the proposed, is what I'm saying.
Oh, yeah, existing or current.
So that's, I guess I'm asking to take a closer look at that, because what that just did would not be permitted in the proposed, so if commission members don't feel like that is where we should live.
We may have to look at that closer, if somebody owns, they own it, so that's probably why it's in there, it's deed restricted. It is assigned to that building and always will be, it's carried with it.
Deed restricted and has to be in the same ownership.
But that's residential discussion we're having now, if you're talking about if we did a business, we would not be able to do that.
Yeah, so if it's deed restricted, well, I'm trying, so they're both basically deed restricted with each other, right? Because then you can't sell...
That is correct.
Okay, yeah, I guess then if they're both deed restricted, it would not, it would not be applicable, so. Sorry, sorry to cause more confusion than necessary.
I know, it's just good to think those things through.
And that's all I have.
All right, well, thank, any questions?
I thank you both for your report. Announcements and other business, first off, our next meeting is scheduled for May 2nd in the evening at 10:15, we'll be meeting at the Athens Community Center. I'm not sure what the room number is, but the...
I'll figure it out.
A and B, B and C, yes.
It's not in the gymnasium. Any announcements or other business? All right, in that case, our meeting's now adjourned, thank you.